The first are the consent agendas, council. You will take those as a whole. If there's one of those that you want to discuss, it will have to be pulled out from the whole and discussed after the vote on the consent agenda. There will only be one motion. One motion is to approve and authorize the mayor to execute.
Okay. Any questions on item one?
None.
All right.
Item thirteen is the mayor will veto of the hours of operation of ABC license businesses.
All right. We'll handle that at the beginning. If council wants to have any questions on item thirteen, before we move on, we'll work on it in the regular session.
Should we get that thing done away with?
Fourteen ordinance resigning two lights at seventeen fifty-one Yawar Street from an R sixty-five D to B two Q district. The public hearing has already been held on this one. It's ready for vote.
Ms. Johnson?
Uh, okay.
Okay.
Fifteen is review of Evergreen Estates, forty-five ninety Troy Highway.
All right. We'll discuss that in the regular session. Mr. Mitch is now here.
Sixteen ordinance amending section twenty-one dash thirty-two, composition appointment and term of offices of planning commission.
Okay. Any questions on the, uh, just planning commission appointments? Any questions on that? Comment?
I don't know.
Everybody good?
I'm not.
Not yet.
All right.
I don't know how.
Do you, would you like, okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Give us a brief.
Um, we're proposing a change to the ordinance simply to add qualification and experience requirements for members of the planning commission. So it's a fairly simple change, and it would be a requirement that members of the commission actually exhibit the experience or qualifications, um, within a number of areas relevant to the decisions that they make.
Uh, Warren, uh, Mr. President, Warren, what would be, what would you consider demonstrated experience? Cause that can be interpreted a lot of ways. So are you saying so many years?
Yeah.
Or what? What is it?
Yeah. I mean, it's deliberately left open because there's a lot of different experience applicants could have. And so that could be based on the number of years of practice, or on educational qualifications, or on the work that they actually do. And this is really just to make sure that when applicants submit an application to the commission, they are getting the best reviews and recommendations possible. This would bring us into line with the Historic Preservation Commission and the Architectural Review Board, which currently have experience and qualification requirements. This will also tie in with the new zoning code that we're currently reviewing. So we're just trying to tighten all of our boards up and make things better for the applicants in the city in general.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to see us talk about this in the, uh, cause it has to do with our appointments. And so it needs to be more than a department making that decision on what this looks like. So if we can put it in a committee or something, so we can discuss it a little more, please. Thank you, Mr. President.
He scared over too.
Mr. President, my only other question though would be, um, I've just noticed, Warren, that there's been, um, some absences at the commission as well. And I wonder if tying in people that are, uh, the idea of the qualification for this one seems fairly relevant because we're trying to move projects through the city. And if we're caught, I mean, it does get a little frustrating to see that we're constantly getting these stalled out planning commission, um, votes because we just don't have people with enough skin in the game in attendance.
Yeah. And this would bring us into line with two of our existing boards that currently have these requirements and included in the application process.
All right.
And to that point, you got quite a few of appointments that are coming up here, I think at the beginning of the calendar year. So, um, you know, this would, this would guide us in that, uh, I'll be frank with you. This is just to ensure that we have people that are on the planning commission that understand just the basics of planning. It's not to, to have someone that is a lifelong architect or anything along those lines. We just need to make sure we have folks on those commissions that have a basic understanding of what planning is and what we're trying to accomplish with the planning commission.
Yeah. I think you have talked. Mr. Tate, you want to speak to, I think me and you had a conversation about what, planning commission is very important to the city. And as we move forward, we don't get this right when we're planning as we grow in the planning. We kind of get ourselves caught up in the thing. But go ahead and you can.
And I don't want to repeat what's been said other than to say that we're at a pivotal time in this city. As you guys struggle with ordinances to keep up with other issues, we want to try to do what we can to make sure that when the city grows, moves forward, we've got the right tools in place, including the people who understand how we need to get there and the issues that are involved to make sure that we make good decisions at a planning level. And beyond that, other systems kick in. But right now, our biggest challenge is making sure that we get the right type of people to understand where we're going. One, two, as you might have noticed, a considerable amount of decisions from the planning commission have ended up at your doorstep because there was lack of action at that board level. I don't think that's why you appointed those folks. You appointed them to make those decisions and be comfortable with those decisions so that it doesn't have to come here unless absolutely necessary. So this is one we feel real strongly about, and I would appreciate, as well as other people on the ground that take your calls or help issues related to these kinds of items, to support us in this effort, please. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Tate?
Uh-uh.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item seventeen ordinance amending the license tax classification in section sixteen dash one oh six, license classifications AM. And Mr. President, I put a substitute up there on your business license through, um, Mrs. Ballinger sent us a little tweaking that needed to be done on those.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on seventeen? All right, eighteen?
Ordinance repealing ordinance number forty, there's twenty twenty-four, gun identification.
Ms. Fruit?
We're gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Item nineteen, application for a towing company doing businesses, rag towing, seventy-nine, seventeen, Arrowhead, Forest Court.
All right. Any questions on nineteen? Uh, Ms. Ryan's not here. Twenty?
Application for retail beer offering, Mrs. Ollin, doing businesses A and B sale at twenty-eight seventeen Lorretown Road.
Ms. Johnson?
No issue.
Okay. All right. Everything else, just an appointment. All right. The council have anything before we go into our public communication? All right. All right. Let's go back to thirteen, Mr. Mitch.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
Uh, before we, we discuss number thirteen, I asked that, um, Councilor Andrew Semensky be removed from the floor due to he have a, a conflict of interest on this specific veto.
Okay. Yeah, to the regular meeting.
Into the regular meeting? We about to discuss it. He can state? Okay.
All right.
Uh, Mr. President, I did want to add something. Uh, since we were on a topic of boards, I know I've mentioned it a couple of times, but it's a few boards that we need to look at. And, um, that's why I asked that we go into committee about it. Cause there's a few boards that are just definitely, we need to look at, uh, the bylaws and how we appoint to them to ensure that things are operating correctly and the agencies that we support and all the different departments that these projects go through to get to us. Yeah.
All right.
That ain't got nothing to do with that.
We'll decide that in the regular session, in the regular meeting. All right. We ready for thirteen? Yeah, we're ready for thirteen.
Um, do we have anybody?
I was gonna discuss it in the regular meeting.
We gonna discuss in the regular? We gonna discuss? We can.
Cause I'm trying to get through this here to get to, uh, the, uh.
It's gonna be long, man.
All right.
All right. In our public communication, uh, work session roster, Mr. Patrick Doxey. Uh, railroad crossing improvement by CSX.
Hello, council.
Hello.
See, Mike, if you'd put that PowerPoint up on, appreciate it. I come tonight just wanted to kind of update the council on some improvements are gonna really be happening in District Four. Uh, there's a lot of numerous railroad crossings within District Four, and CSX, uh, is going to be repairing approximately twelve of those crossings. Uh, they will start on, um, really about January the thirteenth. Um, each crossing will take twenty-four to forty-eight hours worth of work for them to, they'll shut down that crossing, uh, replace the tracks, and then, um, pave it back. Uh, three of them start outside in the planning jurisdiction. You can see here their locations and the streets they're on. And, uh, in the, out in the PJ, we've got George Drive, uh, West McLean, uh, Road and Wazner Road. Uh, so they're gonna start on farthest south end of the track and then work their way north. Uh, then you can see there's nine more, uh, on the next slide, nine more locations that are within the city limits here. Uh, you can see all those listed there. Uh, really just wanted to come for you tonight and present this information. We'll, we'll supply the same slides to our, our media group so they can put it out on, um, on Facebook as well. So we're just really trying to be here open and transparent with the public, let them know what's going on, but also let the council members know that the improvements are going on within, within their district. And I'm sure Ms. Julie's gonna ask me about, uh, some that we have met on, um, with Progressive Rail. Uh, we had a meeting with them. Their work is scheduled in April of this year. They've already got the contractors lined up. They are waiting on funding from the corporate office. Uh, but funding comes through, they will begin those improvements in the April timeframe. So just wanted to bring that information before you tonight, council.
Which one? All right. Any questions, Mr. Dunson?
No.
Mr. President, can I ask a question? Mr. Dunson, can you make sure I get that in the PowerPoint?
Sure.
So I can make sure I get it to my neighborhood associations?
I'll email it to you.
So that they can see what we're getting ready to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dunson, Mr. President?
Ms. Dunson?
Mr. Dunson, I talked to, um, I think his name's Patrick.
Patrick with Progressive, yes.
But not Spence, the other guy. You know who I'm talking about.
Yes.
But I talked with him today because I had several complaints about the cleanup and the cutting and all that. And I understand it's the twelve feet on either side at the center of, um, and they've gone in and done some, have completed some low lying branches, completed that, but still that tall grass, that kind of thing. Um, and then past that, do we, does the city take care of that part, or?
Usually the, the railroad takes care of the vegetation. It may affect
Yes, sir.
the driving of the trains and all. Usually if it's at an intersection, sometimes we'll come in behind and, and try to, you know, weed that, that down to help control, control that look. But if, if there's an issue with any, you know, the specific crossings with vegetation right adjacent to roadway, we can take care of that if need be.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunson.
Thank you, Mr. Dunson, for always keeping us updated.
And we're proud for item.
Mr. Ken Austin, Manor Mercy House. Senator Mike.
Mr. Austin.
Can't see you from over there. Asking for some fun.
I thought it was.
Hey.
Good morning, evening, afternoon. How are you today?
Good, good.
Been asking for some help for the Manor House. We've been working, uh, to put this initiative together for almost two years now in the city of Montgomery, city and county of Montgomery. It's a food commissary. It's gonna put cooked food out in the city and the county of Montgomery. We're starting out with a thousand meals a day, going out into the city and the county of Montgomery. We already doing five hundred meals a day at the Mercer House, helping homeless people, helping our seniors, already helping after school programs. The Manor House is gonna be a commissary that will be able to help other nonprofits, other agencies that are serving and the food insecurity is the gap. So we're working really hard. We've almost got this place to completion now. The county has worked with us with three hundred thousand dollars to help us with the equipment. We're asking the city to come along and to help us to, to finish it. We've found ourselves with this old building, some unforeseen debt. And so we're asking the city to step in to help us so we can finish this project. So the first of the year, we can be out in the city and the county of Montgomery, uh, feeding the people, helping those who are in need as we've been doing for the last fifteen years here in Montgomery.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Austin, is this separate from the MAP Center that was funded with ARPA dollars?
So the MAP Center is, this is the food that will go to the MAP Center. There's no food at the MAP Center. There's no place at the MAP Center for people to get food in order to eat. That food now comes from the Mercer House, and the Mercer House is not equipped to continue doing that.
Okay, so it's outside.
Mr. Ken, you mentioned that there was some unforeseen debt. Is it debt or expenses?
Expenses.
Okay.
Yes.
Just rehabbing and getting it ready?
Getting the building ready. We found the building had to be completely rewired. We had to put in a, a grease trap, which was like fifty thousand dollars. So a lot of things like that came up that we did not know we need to do starting out.
All right. All right. I think Mr. Austin sent each of you an email asking for his support. So thank you, Ken, for what you do.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll look at this and see what we can do for you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right. Main Street, sponsored by Councilor Johnson. Who is that? Street Main.
Main Street.
Yeah.
I'm glad to be in front of y'all, not, not talking about landmarks, actually.
Your name, your name for the record, sir?
Yeah. Um, so I'm Collier Neely. Uh, I'm the newly elected president for Main Street Montgomery. Uh, we received our designation, uh, in January. It was an application that was done in partnership between the city of Montgomery, the Chamber, and Landmarks Foundation. Uh, I'm happy to introduce you to a few of our board members. Uh, behind me is Nick Wyatt, uh, Laconia Murray, as well as Will O'Connor, uh, and then our acting executive director, who is Daryl Washington. Uh, I'm gonna let him introduce you to all the things that we're, we've got going on right now, and then kind of walk you down what we've got planned for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you, Collier. Uh, my name is Daryl Washington. I serve as the executive director of Main Street. And we wanted to just come and give you an update. We know since January, you hadn't heard a lot about us. Uh, Main Street is part of a national organization, and we have been going through a lot of training. Uh, we've had a lot of check boxes that we had to check off. Uh, but do know in this short period of time, we have received three grants, uh, that we're now, uh, able to make money available to businesses in our district. So you'll hear more about those grants, uh, coming up next year. Uh, also, we are planning a kickoff next year. So more than anything, I guess in this time of being thankful, we want to thank the mayor's office for supporting Main Street. Want to support, uh, we want to thank the council for supporting Main Street. And just know that there are many great programs coming down the road. So this is just to give you an update and give you, uh, just thanks for, for supporting the organization.
Uh, Mr. Washington, before you, uh, walk off, Mr. President, uh, how is the project going as far as, I know you don't give us an update, but I know last time we met, we had an in-person meeting with Main Street Alabama?
Yes.
I believe. And they talked about, uh, the funding and things of that nature. Can you tell me where that is right now?
Sure. So, uh, we are partnering with the city. The city has supported, uh, Main Street from the beginning. In fact, we would not be a designated community if it was not for the city's support. So right now, we are negotiating funding for our operating expenses. Uh, actually, the city provides funding for my salary as well as services that, other services we provide. Uh, but we are currently still in negotiations, uh, for operating funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Oh, yes. Uh, so one of the things with Main Street and why it's so important, it brings national resources to Montgomery. Uh, so we've received three grants, and that's not for the organization. Those grants are monies that can go out to businesses in the district. Uh, so one of the things we did was a trial. Um, if, if a business was to complete a branding training class, uh, there are six businesses that would get one thousand dollar grants. Uh, next year, we're rolling out a, uh, a pitch competition where one business can get up to forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, in addition to that, we received a grant of twenty-five thousand dollars, and we will be rolling out lights in densely lit areas of downtown. So string lights, as well as every business, has the opportunity to get uniform A frames that light up to help identify their business. So we went down this track for a reason, and it was to bring outside resources in. But the other, the other reason we did this is it's community based. I want to really thank this board because we are a startup. Uh, the staff for Main Street is me. Uh, however, this board has been acting like staff. Not only are they running their businesses, uh, we're meeting three, four times a month, and they're serving as staff until we can get funding to truly build a team.
Okay. Uh, as we, I, I want to get into what you all doing, but for me, it, this is coming up quite often. So with the ARPA dollars, we passed a resolution as a council for the P three. I remember we all went through the conversation, what is P three? How does that, okay. So Main Street is a part of the P three distribution with ARPA dollars. Uh, quarterly, as a council, this is, this is where we are. This is the disconnect. We should be getting a report to let us know where the projects are, how they're moving forward, how they're funded, what they need, and if things are happening in the way that we put out for it to happen, when we sign and approve, well, when we approve the resolutions across the council. This is, you said you're negotiating. What are you negotiating? Cause we already said that we approved P three. ARPA dollars have been distributed. It is about to hit December thirty-first. What are you, Mr. Reed, what are they negotiating?
So the P three is not Main Street.
It is a part of the P three.
It is a part of the P three.
We passed that resolution.
Right. So when we start talking about bringing in, uh, Block by Block, which is an organization that helps, uh, the downtown businesses and Main Street, uh, have downtown ambassadors that will help with when we see someone that may be homeless need services, they will help get those people the services they need. In addition to that, they will also work with PD, our sanitation team, all of those, uh, entities to make sure that we keep downtown neat, tidy, and make sure that it is presentable for all the visitors and tourists that come to our area, whether if it's a convention, whether if it's a bowl game, parade, anything along those lines. So when you talk about those seed dollars, those seed dollars went into standing up, uh, the P three. Now, with that requires office space, uh, that you pay for. Also, uh, working to get staffing for that P three. So the, the funding to pay those individuals will come out of that to include the contract that we are working, uh, with Block by Block to get those, those downtown, uh, ambassadors on the street. Also, we're not charging them a lease, but they will be operating out of Union Station. So we've had to move some people around and do some, uh, upgrades to areas so they are office spaces that folks can actually work out of and are worthy of working out of. So the money's not being appropriated, uh, outside of those entities. Uh, Mr. Washington as the lead of the P three, uh, can brief you on that, but Main Street is just a part of the P three. Matter of fact, we talk about it as a three-legged stool. One of the legs is Main Street. The other piece is downtown beautification and, um, and, and engagement, which will be Block by Block. And then there's the other piece that talks to small business and recruitment of small businesses. We haven't gotten to the recruitment piece yet. However, uh, with all that said, uh, we can always get with the council and do a, a committee meeting and have that brief. Uh, the way we had to set up the P three is it is actually an entity that falls under the Chamber of Commerce's foundation.
Right.
So, uh, that's, that's kind of, uh, in a nutshell, how the P three is structured and the things that we have done thus far.
Right. So I understand that, Mr. Reed. I know that the chamber was the recipient for those funds, but we also in that contract had Main Street as a sub recipient. And I'm hearing Block by Block, but I didn't hear that they received any of their funds. So if anything changes, we should have been aware of that, or at least me.
Well, uh, so I, I'll let Mr. Washington speak to that, but just because we haven't spent the money.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
Right, right. I don't believe we spent money outside of just a, maybe a conference or something along those lines.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Right. But I don't think, I don't think Block by Block has, has benefited from the P three as of yet, as they're working through some things. That's, I believe that's why they're using grants to try to take pressure off of those dollars to be able to fund the things they want to do through, through, uh, Main Street to get that done. But I won't overtalk Mr. Washington. I'll give it over to him.
I appreciate it. Cause, uh, cause what I'm saying is.
All right. Let's, let's give Mr. Washington's hand to close this out.
Yeah. So absolutely, as, um, as was stated by Mr. Reed, so there, there is multiple entities that's a part of this downtown revitalization. Here's what we can commit to you is, uh, we will give you a quarterly report and quarterly update on what's going on. We'll be glad to, uh, meet offline as well to, uh, dig further on where we are.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Washington. Thank you, guys, for coming. Ladies and gentlemen. All right. Beyond the Wall Ministry Felicia Taylor? And Marie Singleton? Are you okay? All right. I'll pass, ma'am.
Not yet. That's what I'm saying.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Well, first of all, good evening to each one of you. I am actually here just supporting, uh, Ms. Marie Singleton. I am an employee of Alabama State University at thirty-two Commerce Street. And of course, you know where that's located, and we have a lot of tourists, and we are a revenue generating division. Having said that, we have a major issue with homelessness. We have a major issue in our stairwell where we park. We have a major issue in our garage, um, area, in the elevator, um, in front of the doors. And so I made some phone calls to some people. Marie Singleton was the only one that responded. And in her response, she came with items to help and assist those that are not in shelters, those that I guess can't get to the soup kitchens and all the other places that are feeding. So I just wanted to say that I support her Hands on the Homeless Backpack Project, and I'll let her discuss it further. Thank you.
Good evening. As she said, I am Marie Singleton, and I am the founder of Beyond the Walls Ministry. Okay, put, um, hands on, on the ground for the homeless. What we do is we provide a backpack. In this backpack, we have a tent, we have a sleeping bed, we have toiletries, we have food, we have gloves, we have hats, we have socks, anything that a person would need to try to keep warm against the elements. I have been doing this for a number of years. I have been using my own finances to actually do the project. But as the years have gone by, we have, we are all aware that homelessness is a big issue all over the world, and it's growing bigger here in Montgomery, Alabama, or Alabama in general. You have places that's being set on fire. You have people that's sleeping in tents on people's, uh, personal property that's getting kicked off. And we know that there is no housing. There are no places for these people to go. We also know that there are people that's out there in a homeless environment that does not have the desire to come into a dwelling. They want to be left alone, doing their own thing. A lot of this is, um, because of the mental illness and, uh, other contributing factors as well. So I am not here trying to fix the problem. I'm here to aid a real situation here in Montgomery, Alabama, because the problem is too big for me. And it's too big for one individual period. But I feel like if we all combine our resources, I've been trying to network with people to get funding so I can continue to do the backpacks. One backpack when I started out was between seventy-five and eighty dollars. And it would give them, it's like a home. You know, it's like a dwelling for them. F, the prices increased. You know, now we're like at a hundred, a hundred and five per backpack. And the food... And the food that we put in, there's water, there are non-perishables that, um, we're passing out. I am just now beginning to say that when I go and pass out this information, uh, or the items to them, I'm trying to collect information, trying to make an assessment of the needs that the people are dealing with. And we see that they are homeless. But what else is there going on?
All right, Ms. Washington, I know they didn't put the clock up, but that's your time. We have your proposal here. We'll look at it and each council member can do something. Unless you guys got any questions?
I, I have, uh, chief, do we, Mr. President?
Mr. Johnson.
Ma'am, um, we, I appreciate, and I know the council appreciates everything that you're doing, but what we find is there's a duplication of services because people don't know it exists. We have a homeless task force here in the city of Montgomery that has existed, I think, good over two and a half years. If you would, when you're done, meet with Mr. Eddie Compton. Eddie, can you wave your hands and he will inform you on what they're doing and how you can connect?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's great information. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. All right. Julienne Saint Surin, Boss U League.
It's not a weapon.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We'd like to tell, uh, I have a few words for my husband. I'm gonna make it real brief.
On, um, a couple of months ago, the council was very supportive of, uh, we took about twenty-two kids to the city of Miami for a basketball tournament and, uh, with the BBS, Big Brothers and Sisters of Miami, um, middle school basketball tournament and we came back champions. We won first place.
Good job.
We were over thirty-two. And we brought the trophy back to Montgomery. And so, they asked us to come back next year so that they could try to win it back. So, uh, we just want to thank the council for their support in, uh, donating, uh, to, uh, the best of students use Boss U League program. We really appreciate that those kids had a wonderful time in Miami and to come back as champions, bring the trophy back to Montgomery says a lot about what you did for us and also the program.
Yes, I also want to, uh, we also want to thank the mayor. Now, if we're in season right now, so it's been really hard for us to come over here and come with all the kids. Um, we have, uh, like two or three star players at every middle school in Montgomery County. Uh, the whole starting five for Capitol Heights, which didn't have a winning season in a long time, which my hu, my son was attending, uh, they're now, uh, seven and, well, eight, eight and two. Uh, and they haven't had a winning season in years, but they all came from our program, uh, and, uh, been training them and, uh, coaching them for the past three years. So, every point guard, there's a guard, there's a star player at every middle school that comes from us and also the high school. We came here, we wanted to tell you thank you. We want to ask for your continual support to come to the games. We're in season all year. We help develop. We also teach entrepreneurship. We keep these kids off the street and we're, uh, focusing on being proactive. So, we wanted to say thank you. And I want to also send an email to each one of you all so you could give us a size, because we do want to give you a shirt. Thank you all. We do have an upcoming trip. We not come here to access for funds. If you donate, we'll greatly appreciate it. Thank you. But, we do have an upcoming trip. You know, we always do this, uh, three, four times out the year. We're going to Memphis. We spending the night. Uh, we're not gonna be competing, but we will be, uh, shooting with the NBA players with Ja Morant courtside. So, this is gonna take place, uh, December twenty-sixth. And we also, we always want to keep you all updated in what we're doing in the city and we'd like to say thank you again. I do have my son with me, but everybody else, they're, they're in season. They're, they're playing and competing.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. Valerie Cobb, iHeart Media.
Thank you.
The time has started. We're passing. Don't run, don't run.
Hello, I am Valerie Cobb with iHeart Media. I represent three of the stations here, which is Hot 105, Magic ninety-seven point one, and Hall and Moon 104.3. This past November, we did a turkey giveaway and we have been doing this turkey giveaway in conjunction with Steve Harvey for several years now. Uh, in conjunction with him, we partner and we give away turkeys to the local community. However, over the years, um, Steve's support is kind of doing it a little bit. And this year, thanks to Councilman Calhoun, we, um, we were able to partner with some other businesses. Some of my businesses, local businesses pulled out, but he came in and supported. I wanted to do the same thing again for Christmas. Um, so I'm asking for funding to help us do that. The way it's set up and it's inside the packet is that we create a date and a time. We do not tell the location and the time, just because some of our local businesses that we've partnered with, they've kind of attacked them and kind of been set up way before the time of the giveaway. But we do use all three of our stations to let the public know what day it's going to be and then we announce the time. And those people get to show up and everybody that shows up gets to take away a, uh, funds for a turkey as long as the supplies lasted. Uh, we did it this past time in November at Oak Park and it worked really well. We just rolled through the circle and we kept a good flow to the very end. It lasted about two hours. Normally, they're gone in about thirty minutes. So, I did have enough, but it was only on one station and I wanted to open this up to where it would be a part of all three of our stations. The information's on our stations, uh, inside of the packet that I passed out.
Anybody have any questions from Ms. Cobb? Thank you. It did go well and I like that unidentified location to the day of. Went well. Thank you. All right, that's it for our public.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitchell.
I, I have one thing. Is anybody from the business license department here? Bob, you here?
Yeah, here.
I, I, I have an issue. We, we passed a ordinance that kind of lumped convention centers, um, um, event centers. Now, we are starting to see convention centers not having to come in front of the city council. I think we are starting to get, I, I think we just got one on Narrow Lane Road that did not have to come in front of the city council. I think we did away with BYOB, so they are, uh, they don't have, they don't have to get a, um, ABC liquor license. So, that means that they are able to bring in, allow people to bring in their own liquor due to the fact. And I just think that we should have looked at that because now you're getting people that's getting bigger businesses. If they have over twenty-five, is it twenty-five? But what's, what's the square footage of a convention?
Fifteen hundred.
If they owe fifteen hundred, they don't have to come in front of the council?
That's correct.
And they can get a business license without coming in front of us, without us even knowing that they are there, correct, Bob?
That's correct.
So, we are getting convention centers that can operate as, as a club now and can, can rent out, can do whatever they want. And we have no control of it because we decided that a convention center, anything over fifteen hundred square feet can go where they want to go and don't even come in front of the city council. Is that correct, Bob?
That is correct.
That's correct. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. Thank you, Bob.
But we can revisit that again if you'd like.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, council, we, uh, have a situation that we need to go into executive session, um, to talk about land acquisition and financial obligation.
Economic development.
Economic development. Called to my attorney. So, I need a motion for executive session.
Don't move.
And we will not come back. We will.
Just a moment, Mr. Um, Mrs. Ballinger, does this satisfy the statute?
It does. I'll, I'll get you the section.
Okay. Proceed on.
All right, all the table, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, Ms. Blalock, this should take about fifteen, twenty minutes. So, we're convened at five fifteen in the council chamber for the regular council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.